Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coman.
Hello. It is my pleasure to call to order the September 17th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Sorry about that.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Bell. Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Kader.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Thank you. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders related to social distancing, shelter-at-home practices, and more. These orders also included the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. Are there any commissioners available by phone today, or no? Everybody's here? Okay, we got it. Okay. Some commissioners may elect to participate by phone. We don't have that going on today. So, we will be able to move right on to Pledge of Allegiance. So, if we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty then. We have a few people here tonight, so thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the city planning division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve them, prove the item, or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of the community. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on items 5A through 5E, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Okay. We will now move on to the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items. These are general items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate consideration? Okay. In that case, may I have a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Kader.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bowers? Thank you. Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Coman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Kader.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
And before we go on, I think that we did, I did miss stating something here, that all of our Planning Commission votes tonight will be conducted by a roll call vote, so I was supposed to say that upfront, so there you go. So, how was, how did that go?
Motion passes with Commissioner Bell and Wade absent.
Well, thank you. Go through that. All righty then, let's see here. We will now move on to the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next Agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The planning director will read the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of the items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If the item is not removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. Mr. Johnson, would you like to read the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items?
Thank you, Chair Coman. Good evening, commissioners, members of the public. Thank you for attending tonight. There are five items on the consent agenda. The first three items, as displayed on the screen, are three-year extensions of time for vesting tentative tract maps 6383, 6499, and 7261. Map 6383 is located north of State Route 178 and east of Morning Drive, consisting of 95 single-family lots on 29.37 acres. Map 6499 is located south of State Route 178 and east of Fairfax Road, consisting of 20 single-family lots on 10.27 acres and one multifamily lot on 7.11 acres. And map 7261 is located at the northeast corner of Gosford Road and Berkshire Road, consisting of 221 single-family lots on 60 acres. Consent Agenda Item 5D is a request for a zone change from R1, one-family dwelling, to M1, light manufacturing, on 8.06 acres, generally located at the northeast corner of Arrow Street and North Select Avenue. This is primarily a cleanup action. And the last item are revisions to an approved comprehensive sign plan for the Memorial Hospital Complex located on 34th Street. The revisions are to accommodate a new 90,000-square-foot medical office building. This completes the reading of the consent agenda items.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, I will open up all the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Are we on that part? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar public hearing item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony just to ask that an item be pulled off for discussion. Okay. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar public hearing item? All right, seeing none. Okay. At this time, the public hearing on all of the consent calendar and public hearing items not removed are now closed. That's all of them, none were removed, so they're all closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items? Period.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt staff recommendations on the consent calendar items A through D.
Commissioner Bowers, thank you. And may I have a second, please?
Commissioner Bowers, I think it's A through E tonight.
That's correct.
Yeah, A through E. Let's skip one of them.
And I will gladly second that.
And Mr. Kader's second. Madam Clerk, can you please take your roll call vote?
Commissioner Coman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Kader.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bell and Wade absent.
Well, thank you very much. All right, so that moves us down to... We're on item number seven. That brings us to workshops. And Mr. Johnson, would you like to talk about conditional use permits?
I would, yes.
Thank you.
If I may have the secretary put up the other slideshow. Thank you. Well, for some commissioners, this is a long time coming. Some commissioners may find this as a refresher on the conditional use permit. Your commission should also find this very similar to the process that we use for PCDs, planned commercial development, and PUDs, planned unit development. However, there are nuances about this that you need to be made aware of. So with that, some of the items we're going to cover are permitted uses versus conditional uses, the conditional use permit process, the decision-making process, conditional use permit data, some miscellaneous information, and an implementation timeline. So within the ordinance, within the residential, commercial, industrial zones, there is a special section for permitted uses. And these are uses that are allowed by right, which only requires compliance with the zoning ordinance and city development standards. This is a ministerial action, meaning there's no public hearing. The review is either done over the counter by planning staff, and then we will send them over to the Building Department for construction permits, or it's done through the Site Plan Review Committee. And I'll describe more about that committee here in a few slides. Some examples of permitted uses would be an accessory structure in the R1 zone, in the single-family zone. So if somebody wanted to put up a structure that required a building permit, let's just say like a batting cage of sorts that's taller, we would look at it, make sure it's out of the setbacks, we look at it over the counter, and if it meets the standards, we would just send them over to building for permits. An example of another permitted use that would go through the Site Plan Review Committee would be a church in a C1 zone. That would be looked at more in depth, and again, I'll describe how and what we look at through the Site Plan Review Committee. Following the uses permitted section within the zones, the different zones, there is a conditional use section, and these are uses that the city council has determined are compatible with that zone. However, they require special review and control to ensure compatibility with other existing and permitted uses in the vicinity. And again, this is discretionary, which means that it requires a public hearing to allow public input, and it is a panel, which was previously the Board of Zoning Adjustment and will now be your commission to make that decision. The review is done first by the Site Plan Review Committee, and again, I'll go through the process momentarily. We also take public input, and then, of course, any input that the hearing body may have. Examples of some conditional uses would be a rooming house in the R1 zone, requires a conditional use permit, or an assisted living facility in the C1 zone. So it begins with submission of a CUP application, and that is five pages. The first page is just, we're just looking for contact information. The last two pages are signatures of the applicant and property owner. So really, there's only two pages that an applicant needs to fill out, along with submission of a site plan and elevations and landscape plan. And staff is there to help the applicant fill it out, because there's some information on there, such as what is the general plan designation, or what is the accessory's parcel number that they need help filling out, and we'll help them fill that out if that's necessary. So it's not an extensive application. Once it's submitted, planning staff takes the initial review. If it's incomplete, it's sent back to the applicant for corrections and for re-submital. Some of the reasons it's incomplete is failure to provide a property owner's signature. A lot of times, applications are submitted by applicants on behalf of somebody, and we want to make sure that we're not processing a use that the property owner is not aware of. Another common item for an incomplete application is they do not sign to indemnify the city. They need to hold harmless the city. Sometimes, we're missing lot size or building size, and that's critical in determining how many parking spaces are required and making sure that the building fits on the lot. Missing landscape plans or missing elevations. And for those reasons, again, it'll be sent back to the applicant, so that way, when we get an application package, it's a whole package that we can review. Once we deem the application complete, the planning staff will do an environmental review. Typically, within the city, most projects are an infill project or a conversion of an existing building, so it can be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. However, there are some projects that may require a thorough review, such as mitigated negative declaration, or potentially even an environmental impact report. And that adds time and fees to the process. Once we have made that determination, we send the plans to the Site Plan Review Committee. And the Site Plan Review Committee consists of the Building Division. Staff will look at the plans and offer comments. The Planning Division looks at it. Water Resources. The Fire Department. Public Works Engineering Division will look at it. Traffic, solid waste, and if needed, we'll have the Bakersfield Police in Wrexham Park take a look at the plans. And if there's conditions that need to be imposed, we'll take those and we'll add those as part of the project. So once we have the recommended conditions of approval, they are primarily there for compliance with the municipal code. And if you, there's a handout that I did give you that has these slides, and if you look at the first tab, there's 22 pages of a template of conditions of approval. When staff reviews the project, they'll go through those 22 pages, and they'll look to see which conditions are applicable to this specific project. Those that are not applicable are not carried forward. Those that are, are carried forward. And additionally, there could be, depending on what it is, such as if it's a heliport, which is a unique project, there may be additional conditions added. But those conditions are to ensure compliance with the municipal code, with the general plan objectives, with different city development standards, with federal and state codes, and conditions to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And that includes maybe a condition to dictate the hours of operation, so such as a, let's just say, if there is an outside bar, they may, we, you may want to condition the project to cease outside operations at midnight. There can be conditions to site aesthetics. An example of this may be an outdoor banquet hall. There may be a condition that all trash is removed within a block of the area within 12 hours of the event concluding. Or there may be other conditions that require compliance with other permits, such as a bar. There would be a condition that they obtain an ABC or alcohol, like beverage control license. So once we have the recommended conditions of approval, and the project's been reviewed, and everything's deemed complete, we'll go ahead and set the project for a, for hearing, and we'll notify the public. And the purpose of notifying the public really is to gain the public input. And so when we receive comments back, we can go back and we can revise conditions or add conditions based on what the public input may be. Once we have all the conditions that goes into the report, and it's Exhibit A of the staff report that'll go to your commission, and then your commission can, if you deny the request, that could be appealed to city council. If you approve the request, that also can be appealed to city council. But if it's approved and there's no appeal, or if city council approves it on appeal, then they just need to comply with the conditions before they commence operations. Typically, there is a building permit involved, so they may have to make sure all the building permits are obtained. If it's new construction, they'll have to go out and evaluate the landscaping, make sure the landscaping's there before they can commence operations. So when it comes to the decision-making, staff will provide you a recommendation. That may be approval, and that's based on available information at the time of the writing. A lot of times, we won't get public input, sometimes until the hearing. So our recommendation may be approval, but once we start hearing public comments, your commission may say, you know what, that's not a good project, and we may concur with that. If we get late comments after a staff report goes out, you're familiar with our memo that we'll give you addressing those comments, and there have been times when our recommendation has changed from the staff report to what we present to your commission. We may recommend denial. That is very few and far between, because typically, if we do not support a project, we let the applicant know upfront, usually before they even submit an application. We like to talk with them and say, look, you may not get staff's recommendation, a favorable recommendation, therefore, we want you to think if you want to go through, because there is no refund if the project is denied. For controversial projects, we could potentially bring forward to your commission a recommendation that's really neither in approval or denial, and we're going to require that your commission consider all the facts and make that determination. If there are controversial projects, we highly recommend, and we don't like to come forward until an applicant has done community outreach and try to resolve those conflicts. So typically, when you do get a project, typically, it's recommending approval from staff, again, with conditions. We do recommend site visits. Google Earth is an excellent tool, but it's really not quite the same as going out to a site, especially if it's a controversial site. If you have neighbors that are complaining, a lot of times, it's good to go out and see what the complaints may be. Sometimes they're valid. Sometimes they may not be as valid as what's portrayed in a letter that's submitted. And again, public comments, written comments you'll need to take into consideration that's provided, and obviously, any comments that's presented to your commission here at this This is an important slide here we need to really focus on. There are two required findings for approving a conditional use permit. The first, that the proposed use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. Yes, this may be a little subjective, but that is something you're going to have to consider, again, taking in public input, staff's recommendation, and the documents that are provided to your commission. The second finding that must be made for approval is that the proposed use is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan and applicable specific plans. The second tab on the handout is general plan, objectives, goals, implementation measures. That is what we look at on projects to see if the use is in harmony with those elements. So that is something that you can use. Can you find instances where it is not fully in harmony with all those elements? Yes, you will. It's kind of how you, you look at the project. Somebody could look at it as being in harmony with one of the elements, and somebody could look at it as not being in harmony. So again, another reason why conditional use permits should come to a panel such as the commission is because there is some difficult decisions that will need to be made. And again, these findings, the burden of proof is with the applicant. It's not with staff to make that. Staff is here as a neutral party. We want to present the information, and it is for you to listen to all sides. Briefly, again, conditions of approval. If you find you can make those findings, conditions, and this is out of the ordinance, to comply with zoning regulations. Conditions can be imposed to comply with the elements and objectives of the general plan. Conditions to comply with the policies of the city, and any conditions to protect the public health, safety, convenience, or welfare. Your motions that you can make on conditional use permits, in reality, this is the same for general plan amendments, zone changes, and such. You can approve as recommended by staff. If the applicant disagrees with staff, you can approve as proposed by the applicant. You can approve as determined by your commission, which could be adding, modifying, deleting the conditions that are presented to your commission. You could deny the request, and in doing so, an applicant cannot apply for the same conditional use permit on that same property for another year. Unless, of course, there is, there are exceptions. If they determine that, that project, there's extenuating circumstances that weren't considered, they could reapply, but generally, it's a one-year wait to reapply. If there is additional information that's required, that can't be provided to your commission, or if there's questions that can't be answered, you can continue the hearing to a date specific, and we would return whatever date that is with the project, and hopefully to answer all those questions or provide you with additional information. Another option you have is to refer the project back to staff. This is oftentimes a preference to the applicant if they think the project's going to be denied. They would refer, they would request that it be referred back to staff, and with that, it allows additional time, whatever may be needed, for the applicant to do maybe additional outreach. Typically, there's an additional fee because we have to re-advertise the meeting. It doesn't come back to a date certain, so it would be coming back to you at some time in the future. Just some miscellaneous, miscellaneous information on conditional use permits. The entitlement runs with the property in perpetuity. So if I have a banquet hall at one, well, let me back up. Let's say we have a rooming house at a specific address. That individual moves three houses down, they do not keep that rooming house at their next place. The conditional use permit does not run with the applicant. But what it does do is that person that moves out, if somebody wants to come back in, they can continue to run that rooming house. So again, it runs with the property. It does not run with the applicant. You cannot take a conditional use permit with you. Conditional use permits have to commence operations within two years of approval. They can ask for a one-year extension of time, and that has to come back to your Planning Commission for approval. Termination of a conditional use permit. If the use is discontinued for a continuous period of one year, the CUP is then null and void. They would have to come back in and reapply. Revocation of rights. If there is a failure to comply with conditions, and typically, this is identified through code enforcement complaints, or if there are violations of any provision of the Bakersfield Municipal Code on that subject property, we can take this back for revocation. What we would do is we would come back to your commission with the evidence and ask if you want us to proceed with revocation proceedings. So there would be a two-hearing process on that. You would give us direction to go ahead and proceed, and then we would proceed with the revocation, and we'd come back, and your commission would revoke, or you could modify the conditions or of your choosing. The cost for a conditional use permit is just over $2,500, plus a site plan review fee. The site plan review fee is based on the square footage of the building, so typically, when it's a conversion of a building, there is no site plan review fee, so that fee is $2,531. If you are going to build, let's just say, a larger shopping center, and you have a lot of square footage of building, that fee could go as high as a $9,000 site plan review fee, along with the $2,500, so you could potentially have an $11,000 project coming in front of your commission. If there was a need to do a mitigated neg deck for additional sequo review, that $2,531 now goes to almost $6,500. That's because there's additional staff time, there's additional documents that need to be written, and the state has their fair share of the fee. Timeline. Here in Bakersfield, depending on the project, if it's a conversion, typically, we can do it as fast as one month after deeming the application complete. If it's a larger project, sometimes it can take two to three months from deeming the application complete to get it to your commission. Other jurisdictions, such as San Jose, takes six months. LA City takes 10 to 12 months. So how many conditional use permits can you expect? This year was a little bit short for obvious reasons, but we average about 34 conditional use permits a year. I mean, coincidentally, you can see there's three years since 2013 where we had 41 conditional use permits go. That just happens to be a nice coincidence, but 34 on the average. And what is your commission going to be considering? Cell towers are high number. We get a lot of cell towers that come in. Residential in commercial zones, there's a lot of areas in east Bakersfield that are zoned C1, commercial, and a lot of those are, there's vacant lots next to other lots Zone C1 commercial, and a lot of those are, there's vacant lots next to other lots that are, already have duplexes. So we get a lot of duplexes that'll come into the C1 zone in East Bakersfield. Another one is rooming houses. Those were very popular a few years back. We haven't had a lot of those. I will know there will be a rooming house coming to your commission at the next November 5th, when this takes effect, and it is controversial, as are most rooming houses. Trucking yards is another popular one that we get, trucking yards in the M1 zone, so we see a lot of those. And again, this is not an all-inclusive list, this is just a list of CUPs that we've gotten that are frequent. Timeline for implementation. So on May 20th, this was referred from city council to staff to make this change. One month later, we took a draft ordinance to the Planning and Development Commission, and they approved it and told us to go ahead and proceed. One month later, in July 16th, this was in front of your planning commission, the zone, the ordinance changes. Month after that, August 12th, they had first reading at city council. Second reading is scheduled for city council on September 23rd, next week. There is a thirty-day wait before it takes effect, so on October 23rd, it will, BZA will be dissolved, and all planning commission, or all conditional use permits will come to your planning commission. Therefore, on November 5th, you will consider the first CUP. So why have conditional use permits? Really, what it does, it enables the city to control uses which may be essential or desirable, but could conflict with the neighborhood. If there's any questions, staff is available.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do any commissioners have any questions? Let me see here, I got to figure, I'll use this thing here. Okay. I do not see anybody. Hello? Hello? And everybody got it? I only have one, one small question. The Site Review Committee that you have, who's on that? Did I miss that part? The Site Plan Review Committee. So you have all those departments are part of that committee, or?
Yes, so we have, again, Development Services, Building Division, staff is there, the Planning Division, Water Resources, Fire Department, Engineering, Traffic, Solid Waste, and then, as needed, we'll bring in BPD in Wrexham Park.
That, that just looked like it was outreach into those departments, rather than those departments actually being part of that committee. So I misread the graph.
The graph is wrong. You're correct. Those, those individuals, they actually will come to the planning department, and they come several times a week, and they go through all the plans. So it's not like planning reaches out and says, hey, we have this project, would you come look at it? They actually come several times a week to look at projects. So those arrows should actually be pointed the other way.
All right. And then you tagged two of these things in our package. What did you, is there anything you want us to know about those two tabs?
The first tab is the template that we use for conditions, conditions for projects. So those are conditions that are typically applicable or to ensure compliance with the municipal code and development standards. It, it's more just an FYI that these departments have twenty-two pages, and of course, it's broken up into specific sections, and you'll see where engineering has their standard conditions. But there are, it's not just a few conditions we're looking at. We are looking to make sure a project complies with all the development standards and city codes. The second tab is really, when you're trying to make the findings, that if the project can make any of those findings, it's, it's the general plan, goals, policies, and implementation measures. So if, if you feel it doesn't make those, you can say, look, for this reason, it doesn't, this project does not, is not in harmony with item, you know, two, three of the general plan and three, five, and it's not just one, it's typically several. That would be a reason to deny the project.
Okay, thank you. One last chance for any commissioners? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your input. So I'll move us on to number eight on our agenda, communications. Mr. Johnson, do you have any communications?
I do. Our, number of applications, we have a few of them that are, that are on hold, waiting for some additional information. So we will not have a planning commission first part of October. We will keep you apprised of the second one in October. But again, there will be one on November 5th, for sure. And again, there is a conditional use permit that is a little bit controversial that will be coming forward at that time. And if there's any refresher at that time, at that meeting, please let me know during our presentation, because that will not be on consent, that'll be a regular agenda item because there's opposition. And so I will try in my presentation to kind of go over this again, but if there's any questions, please don't make a decision without confidence.
And congratulations to Commissioner Lomas.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Lomas has news, so. Okay. All right, so now we move on to Commissioner Comments. No comments? That moves us to adjournment. Thank you all for coming.